All right, welcome to the December 5th meeting. This is a special meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Have a couple items that we're going to work on or discuss tonight under new business. First being Murfreesboro Electric Department transaction. So, Mr. Tyndall, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Purpose of tonight is to introduce to Council and discuss the proposed sale of the city's electric department to Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation. I will say that the staff of both organizations have worked extensively to analyze all aspects of this transaction, including the benefits and the beneficial terms of a sales transaction, both to the ratepayers and to the taxpayers. And so, we'd like to present that to Council and engage Council in the discussions. I will welcome this evening Chris Jones, who's CEO and President of Middle Tennessee Electric, and I know that he has some staff here. And at least one board member I know, who I just met, is here as well. Let him introduce those who are here with him. And with Council's permission afterwards, have him do a presentation on Middle Tennessee's perspective on the transaction itself. And then afterwards, what I'd like to do is to discuss Agenda Two on the -- or Number Two on the agenda, and that's how this transaction may assist us with CIP. Little history, give it a little context in our discussions. We started, I think the city at least started thinking about the transaction, although I would imagine that it's happened for some period of time, discussing potential merger of the two electric systems back in the 2015 timeframe. That analysis didn't go very far at that time. And then in June of 2018, the city began an extensive review of its organization and financial structures. And as part of that review, we were looking for organizational efficiencies, including utility services, particularly relative to how those are served by outside agencies. And the mayor mentioned in his inaugural address in August that looking at those was something that's important to the city going forward. And essentially, that was driven by a desire to make sure that we're providing the most efficient, cost-effective services to our citizens. When that review, became apparent that revisiting a potential merger of the electric department with Middle Tennessee had some merit. And so, the city reached out to Mr. Jones and indicated the city's interest, and that was reciprocated. And so, staff began working on developing some of the aspects of the deal at that point in time. Along with that, from the city's perspective, the city was undergoing a review of its community investment program, its CIP, as we call it. And we were developing the process to provide Council with a lot more information about CIP and how that would be done. And it became evident that there were substantial needs over the next few years, as we as a growing community would have in our CIP. And staff committed earlier this year to look at alternative ways to finance that CIP. And because we had begun discussions with Middle Tennessee about the transaction, it was clear that that was an alternative that would help us in funding our CIP. So, we, as I said, we began to develop a proposal for the transaction. But we were mindful, as we did that, of a few different considerations. First was that MED ratepayers are city citizens. And so, we knew that we had to balance those interests as we went forward in any type of transaction, and that balance needed to be maintained over a long period of time. The other thing that we knew is we would have to get TVA approval. The city electric department purchases all of its power from the TVA under a contract and has done so since 1938. And to transfer that contract requires TVA approval. TVA approval and their main concerns in that type of analysis is that the electric systems will continue to operate as efficiently and effectively, and that rates would not be impacted by a transaction such as this. So, TVA will do an extensive review on that, and we've done that as well. And lastly, the city, as I said, has considerable demands on its CIP. And so, the question was, a transaction like this, would it really benefit the city to recognize the monetary value that the electric system has? And would that provide the means to be able to fund some of the long-term investments that the city has? So, with those principles in mind, we developed tentative terms, financial terms, for a transaction. And we began developing some of the documents. And so, I'd like to review those right now. The purchase price valuation that we arrived at was $245 million. That's a valuation that recognizes the full assets and liability of the electric system and is a comprehensive valuation of the system as a whole. Now, that purchase price will be paid over a period of time, $43 million at closing. $202 million will be paid on a secured note over 15 years, 3.3 percent interest. And Middle Tennessee's also committed to pay an additional 3.5 to assist in closing MED pension, and I'll talk more about that in a second. All the real estate that the electric department uses to operate will be transferred, essentially the substations easements, and there's a couple of leased properties that will be transferred as well. The exception is the MED office and the storage yard over on Walnut. Those will be retained for redevelopment by the city and then leased to Middle Tennessee for a three-year period of time, up to a three-year period of time, for their use in the transition of the systems. City will secure representation on the board for MED customers that will transition to the co-op members. There'll be two representatives until the bylaws for Middle Tennessee are changed in August, and then they'll become two board seats. And they'll be initially appointed by Council for a two-year period of time. And then afterward, they'll be elected at large in accordance with the bylaws for Middle Tennessee. The city will also appoint an individual to the nominating committee for the board. The nominating committee takes care of nominations for board seats in the co-op. And the city also would appoint someone to the Sharing Change Board. And Sharing Change is Middle Tennessee's charitable entity, so I'll have a seat on that board as well. From an employee standpoint, all employees will be offered positions with Middle Tennessee, and they'll transition to Middle Tennessee's health and retirement plans. MED's pension will be retained by the city. We'll hang on to the pension, it will be frozen with all active participants transferring into Middle Tennessee's defined benefit program. And then eventually, what the plan is to transfer that plan to a financial institution that will take over funding that plan and paying out the payments. And if that transfer occurs in the next three years, then MED is offered to pay half the cost of that transfer, up to $3.5 million. And that's the 3.5 that I mentioned earlier. Lastly, environmental liability on the city for the real estate that's transferred is capped at $500,000, so excluded from that would be the real estate that we'll keep. As with any type of an agreement of this complexity and size, there'll be a lot of other paperwork that will come with it that Council will see. And those are some of the documents that will be presented to Council prior to their decision. I'll make a couple other points before we turn it over to Mr. Jones. Couple of questions have been asked, I think, out in the community. One is, why did the city turn to Middle Tennessee? And I think, from the standpoint, as I said, one of our evaluations was cost efficiency. Cost efficiency was very important. Our electric department serves about 49 square miles. It's surrounded by 2,300 square miles that's serviced by Middle Tennessee. So, there's no other electric system that's contiguous or even close to contiguous that could provide the type of efficiencies that Middle Tennessee could provide. The other thing is that Middle Tennessee Electric is based in Murfreesboro. It has been for 80-plus years. They're committed to staying here with their headquarters. And so, the focus will continue to be on the local interests and the control that we'll have with someone who is based, a corporation that's based here in Murfreesboro. Middle Tennessee is a nonprofit cooperative that avoids the issues that you commonly hear when you compare electric systems with investor-owned utilities. Those really don't apply when you're in the TVA system with co-ops and municipal electric systems. And the other thing that, when we turned to Middle Tennessee, that we understood is that the electric system, electric systems, because of the nature of their business and the stability of their business, can be valued within a reasonable range. So, it is very possible to arrive at a fair valuation. And when we did our evaluation, both the city and Middle Tennessee retained their own valuation experts. We went through an extensive valuation process. And as we assumed that it would, it came, that both valuations came back within a very narrow range. And then, from there, we went back to the process, as I said, of balancing the interests of ratepayers with citizens and what the citizens would benefit from if the electric company was transferred. There's also a question about who would make this decision. The city has authority under its charter to purchase, operate, and sell an electric system. And that was a state law that the city used in 1938 when it formed the electric department. Because the General Assembly has granted the authority to dispose of an electric system if we choose to do that, that's what's known as an administrative action on the part of Council, not a legislative action. There's a distinction between the two. And therefore, the decision to exercise their administrative authority under the charter is a decision that does fall solely to Council, and there's really no means or no authority to place the decision out for a referendum. Last, I have a couple more questions that have been circulating. I think, are the employees in favor of the transaction? And PD is here. Our general manager for our electric system is here, and he can speak better to it. My understanding is that generally speaking, the employees are very favorable to this. We'll meet with employees next Tuesday at the electric department. And I will say that the employees of the electric department, because Middle Tennessee is based here and surrounds us and serves a lot of the area around us, these employees all know each other. They're friends, they're neighbors, so they're very familiar with the employees at Middle Tennessee and Middle Tennessee's operations. And being part of an organization, a larger organization such as Middle Tennessee, does provide a lot of opportunities for employees to grow in their careers. And lastly, why, the question I think that I've seen out there is, why would the city consider selling its electric department? And I think that's largely addressed by the second part of our agenda today, when we talk about the CIP needs and the capital funding requirements that the city has. So, if we have any questions, I'm happy to answer those on this presentation. If not, we can, and if Council allows, we'll have Mr. Jones address Council.
Any questions?
The sub-district that you mentioned that the city would be a part of, we're receiving two appointed board members, board representatives, which we will pick those two, that would later, two years from now, be elected. Would they continue to be board members? Or does one of them go to a different board, as far as the foundation board? Or how does that work?
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Jones, might be best to answer the question, but my understanding is, yeah, they will be elected. Well, I'll let Chris talk more to it, but they'll be elected at large, they'll continue to be board members. There'll be some redistricting that needs to go on under state law, but we'll still have, the city will have the two representatives as board members.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You want Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Tyndall and Mr. Mayor, and members of the Council. It is quite a privilege to be standing before you tonight. So, excited to share some information with you about the virtues of this possibility of our two utilities coming together. And we have a number of people in the room tonight who are excited about this potentiality. So, again, quite an honor to be here. So, let me start by saying that I have a number of people with me here tonight. So, want to introduce you to a few of them, if I could. And we have our board chair, Mike Woods, two other board members from Rutherford County, Will Jordan and David Lee. And Mr. Woods also is from Rutherford County, so glad to have them with me tonight. A number of our senior leadership team members, my fellow teammates, are here this evening. And so, I appreciate them being here. Our board counsel, Grant Phillips, from Basperian Sims, also here. So, in an effort to, among other things, including supporting me here tonight, but also in an attempt to best answer what questions you may have. So, please feel free to ask questions during the course of this presentation. And also, if I could, I'd like to say how much I appreciate seeing some of the MED team members here tonight. And I appreciate them, and I'll start with PD, if I may, and just appreciate him for the collaboration we've been able to enjoy and getting to know him in a better way. That's been rewarding for me. So, this, again, this potentiality, very exciting for us, and we are eager to get started. So, I would submit to you, as the title page of the presentation I have for you suggests, that we have an opportunity here to bring two very good utilities together to be even better, that we could be even better together than we are now. And so, very excited about that, Craig. I believe we'll be talking later about the, what virtues this coming together brings from the standpoint of proceeds, because there will be a transaction, but you get the benefits of a sale from a profit standpoint, with also the benefits of a friendly merger. And this is what this would be. So, very, very exciting. Again, starting, grateful simply to have this conversation. We have a tremendous respect for the city of Murfreesboro and toward Murfreesboro Electric. So, honored to be here tonight. MTMC, as Craig mentioned, is proud to call Murfreesboro home, and we have since the 1930s. We are a corporate citizen of Murfreesboro, have been since then, and we always will be. We've made that commitment, and so, we are standing on that and proud of it. Additionally, and many of us call Murfreesboro home. Many of the MTMC team calls Murfreesboro home. I'm one of them. I'm a citizen of Murfreesboro. I want to see Murfreesboro be successful. And we have 128 MTMC employees who are residents of the city of Murfreesboro, a number of retirees as well. So, if we come together, we're going to triple the number of people who work for the local utility who also live in the city of Murfreesboro at the utility. And certainly, we are very thankful to call, and Craig pointed this out, and I appreciate him doing so, we are proud to call, I've gone forward here, excuse me. We are proud to call MED team members our friends and neighbors. But it goes beyond that, because we have a common bond as utility service people. We are brothers and sisters in service. We are service organizations, so we exist to serve. And that's a bond that we have, and it's a close one. And I personally relish the idea of the potentiality of us joining forces, coming together to serve our local, our hometown, in an even better way. So, I'm going to take some big-picture looks at some virtues I see and are coming together, and then get a little more specific as we go. So, one thing I want to make clear, and I've tried to communicate this in different ways, is that, from a utility perspective, this is not about solving a problem. We're not trying to fix a problem. There's nothing wrong with MED. MED does an outstanding job. They have an outstanding team of employees. They have a robust system with tremendous reliability and low rates. So does Middle Tennessee Electric. We feature low rates and reliability as well, very similar. So, this is not about fixing a problem. What it's about, from a utility standpoint, is tremendous opportunity. And we have tremendous opportunity in this coming together. So, if we come together, we're going to gain significant efficiencies and synergies that we will enjoy in perpetuity. Together, as one utility, we would be better positioned to be opportunistic in a changing industry. And there's no doubt, our industry is changing. It's changing in front of our eyes, but it's going to change that much more as time goes on. So, as our industry changes, we need to be resilient. We need to be nimble. We need to be innovative. So, by coming together, we become more resilient. We put our teams together. We have more resources to deal with situations that are coming, that we need to be better prepared and make sure that we're prepared to deal with these situations for those we serve, for our customers. Coming together, we can be better ready for that. I'll talk a bit more about that later. Another virtue of this change is that it's not going to create disruptive change. So, this coming together will be such that the average customer will not see change. In fact, I would submit that the, one thing that it will do is it will create less confusion for so many customers we have. For example, we have a lot of people who come in our office who think they're coming to Murfreesboro Electric. Murfreesboro Electric has people coming to their office thinking they're at Middle Tennessee Electric. The same thing in our contact center, so forth and so on. But change will be minimal. In fact, the MED team, and Craig mentioned, three years, will stay in the existing building. To start with, we're not going to change anything. The team members at MED, doing the great job they're doing, will continue to do that right where they are. And it's very important to me, I'm going to jump to the last one real quick, that the teammates at MED in this transition will be absolutely taken care of. No jobs are going to be lost. I'm personally committed to the idea that benefits are going to be secured, and we're going to take care of those employees. But they're going to see little change as well, which will simply be one larger team. And then, to jump back up to the second to the last item, something that's a tremendous virtue of this opportunity, is that we can create a positive and stabilizing long-term effect on electric rates and energy bills by our coming together. And I'll talk more about that as we go. So, let me talk a bit about Middle Tennessee Electric, and I know most of you know who Middle Tennessee Electric is, but as a refresher, and also for the benefit of those maybe who are here or watching who don't know, we are an electric cooperative. I'm certainly honored to serve as the CEO. We are an electric cooperative, member-owned. So, our customers are our members. And we serve and exist simply to serve and benefit them. We are a democratically operated organization. We have a ten-member board of directors. Those board members are elected by the membership. So, the membership has voice in the governance of the cooperative, primarily, fundamentally, through the board of directors who are elected. We mentioned that through this process, we're going to carve out Murfreesboro and create a sub-district or two sub-districts for two seats. So, in the course of time, the citizens of Murfreesboro, in fact, right away, will become members and have voting privileges. And one thing about the way our board is set up, is that though board members come from different geographic regions, to make sure there's representation across the cooperative, our members vote at large across the cooperative. So, for example, if Murfreesboro members become, excuse me, if Murfreesboro citizens become members through this transaction, then Murfreesboro members will vote for every board member at the cooperative. And the philosophy there is that the members should have maximum voice, but also that the board members represent the best interest of the membership at large. So, that's how the governance structure works. We are not-for-profit, just like MED is not-for-profit. So, we exist not to benefit shareholders, but to benefit simply our members. We are large among the cooperatives in the United States. There are about 900, and we are the third-largest cooperative in the United States. Among the local power companies in the Tennessee Valley, we are the third-largest. Now, that's municipals and cooperatives. But among all of those, we are the third-largest. Memphis and NES are one and two, and Middle Tennessee Electric is third. We have 236,000 accounts. If we come together, that number will be over 300,000. We're growing by about 7,000 meters a year. Murfreesboro is growing fast as well. If we come together, we will be by far the fastest-growing electric utility in the Tennessee Valley. It brings challenges, but it's also a blessing to have growth like we do. Craig mentioned our size, but if you look at the map, of course, the green area is our service territory, about 2,100 square miles of service territory. The white area in the middle, of course, is the MED service territory. We serve primarily four counties, but we bleed over into a total of 10. That includes 14 cities. And we, for example, serve all of the city of Franklin and Lebanon. We serve other cities like Mount Juliet, Brentwood. So, we are accomplished and well-versed at serving the needs of cities within our service territory. Some more statistics there, I won't go into that much more for the sake of time. But we have about 430 employees. If we come together with MED, we would be over 500. So, again, taking a look at that, if I could call your attention to it, the area in the center, which of course is MED, I'm going to zoom in on that just a bit. So, this is the MED service territory shaded, and Middle Tennessee Electric is all around in the white. And I wanted to share this with you, and I have it on phone cordboard for later, if anyone wants to look more particularly. But if you'll notice, it speaks to a couple of things. One is that you will see that we kind of, a little hodgepodgey, we intersect each other quite a bit around this border. We share a lot of border. So, you can understand why there would be some customer confusion. But it also speaks somewhat to the fact that maybe there's a more efficient way to operate and to exist. So, we'll touch more about efficiency in just a moment. By the way, the lines that go through the service territory here is not actually where we serve, but just where we have some heavy feeder, high-voltage lines. I wanted just to show where we have infrastructure now as Middle Tennessee Electric in the city. Okay. So, I want to take one example related to the border that we shared to show how we exist and we function just fine. Again, MED does an awesome job, and Middle Tennessee Electric does as well, from the standpoint of utility and service. But we are on top of each other. And this is an example, and it's one of scores of examples we could share with you, and be happy to do so if you'd like for us to. But this is Compton Road near the VA Hospital. So, if you will note, the lines on the left side of the road are MED, and the lines on the right side are Middle Tennessee Electric. So, note the pole on the far right, and then look at the lines extending from it that go to the left. Now, if you keep down that path, you see other poles that go to the left. We go eventually over to serve the VA Hospital. But you'll note that there are lines that we have going across that area that are actually in between MED lines. So, you know, it works fine, but it's not the ideal situation from an efficiency standpoint. And this situation, this scenario replays itself over and over again across our service territory and our border. We are, again, just kind of all over each other, because of growth and many other things. We work through it just fine, but it's something that is a reality. So, let's talk about, again, back to efficiencies and synergies. We're talking about efficiencies primarily, but we would submit to you that there are significant system efficiencies that we could gain over time, utilizing the strengths of both systems. And again, these are exercises and things we've been thinking about together and working together through this process. But we certainly have seen them over time. So, for example, the area at Northeast Broad going towards Smyrna, that's an area that, as it continues to grow, that MED, if things continue as is, will need an additional feeder to serve growth on Northeast Broad going towards Smyrna. Well, if we come together, Middle Tennessee Electric already has a feeder there. There's no need to make that investment. We can take care of that. We all know Cherry Lane is an area that is poised for growth. In talking to MED, they are light on capacity in that area. Well, we have good capacity in that area. If we don't come together, MED will be making significant capital investments in order to serve that area. We don't have to do that, or not as much anyway. So, these, and there are scores of other examples like this, where we can utilize the strengths of both systems. The systems have different voltages. That's not a problem. It's not an issue. They operate just fine. Both systems are very strong, and we can utilize the strength of both systems to be even more efficient. I wanted to point to a particular capital investment efficiency, and we can have a number of them over time. We are a capitally-intensive kind of business. We make big investments, and we pay for them over time. And one that we're both looking at, both MED and MTMC, we're both looking at new headquarters campuses. That's both in our short-term capital plans. So, let's talk about the one from Murfreesboro. So let's talk about the one from Murfreesboro. If you talk to anyone from MED, they will tell you that they're tight, they're out of space, they're compressed. They need something new, something bigger. So within their capital plans, they have plans for a new headquarters campus, to purchase land and to build a building. And that's conservatively estimated at $40 million. It's $40 million we don't have to spend if we come together. We're already making those plans, and when we come together, that's something that we can save together. There are immediate and perpetual OEM, meaning operations and maintenance efficiencies that we can gain. And I'll give you an example, the picture we showed a while ago. We have a number of examples where we have lines running down the same side of a street. Many of those streets are poised for widening over time. When that happens, we're going to have to take our lines down and put lines back up. But if we're together, we're putting one set of pole lines back up, not two. So we save immediately in that regard, and then we serve, we save, excuse me, with maintenance costs over time and in perpetuity. A number of examples like that. Again, I could talk for a long time, and I'll probably talk too long as it is, so forgive me, but lots of examples we could use. Reduced duplication. We both have technology suites. There are a number of different types of advanced technologies that we use, different packages. There are many of them that we both use. And we have two, like I mentioned, suites of technology. We both need them, but coming together, we only need one. So that saves cost upfront, that saves cost for upgrades, and it saves costs in perpetuity. So again, a number of benefits. Fundamentally, last line, and this is overarching, and this is financial impact, a great virtue of this coming together is that MED's density is married to Middle Tennessee Electric's economies of scale. Density, meaning the number of customers per mile. Economies of scale, meaning we have a large customer base, and we can spread fixed costs across that customer base. You bring those together, you have a recipe for tremendous success and resiliency. And that's what excites us so much about this, tremendous opportunity. Now, I'm going to pivot now to talk about some synergies that we will gain, and I say "we," the city of Murfreesboro will gain right away by virtue of this coming together. And when I go down this path, I want it to be understood that I am not doing this to be in any way critical of Murfreesboro Electric. PD and I have talked about this a number of times. I'm going to show some capabilities and some investments we have made as Middle Tennessee Electric by virtue really of our economies of scale that put us in an innovative position. They are things that MED is either planning to do or looking to do in the future. But because we already have these capabilities, if we come together, those are cost and investments that don't have to be made. So let's start with this examination. And the way I like to put it is, this is about added value to MED's already great service. Number one, customer service and hours. Right now, MED has set hours on business days, which is good. They do a great job with customer service at MED. But we have 24/7 customer service, 365. So if someone calls at 3:00 AM on a holiday, you reach somebody. So in coming together, this is something that MED will consider in the future, but we haven't now. So if we come together, that becomes immediately available to the city of Murfreesboro, its residents and businesses. A significant one is systems control. We have a systems control operation that is kind of the nerve center of Middle Tennessee Electric. It is a 24/7, 365 operation. We manage grid monitoring and dispatching crews out of that nerve center. It is something that is in PD's plans right now for Murfreesboro Electric, and it should be. It's something that Murfreesboro needs, but we already have it. If we come together, then we fold Murfreesboro's operations, MED's operations, into this systems control, and we rock on. Otherwise, MED will have to make investments in infrastructure for a space, storm-hardened. They'll have to make investments for technology, and they'll have to make investments for human resources to monitor and man that systems control, theirs, if they stand alone 24/7. We already have that. A few other things. And these are, these are more along the lines of human resource investments we have made, and these really pay close attention to the industry changes that we are seeing on the landscape. So these are things that we have done, again, things that MED will consider in the future, but we have them now. So we have a full-time certified cybersecurity expert. Cybersecurity is a big deal in our industry. We have resources devoted to strategy, strategic analytics and strategic planning. That's their day job. They do it every day, planning for this changing industry landscape. We have someone that their day job, they do every day, renewable generation, distributed energy. That's where the industry is going to change. So we need to be positioned to be able to deal with that, to be able to be in a position to answer our customers' questions and meet their expectations. Smart grid. Smart grid is, we have professionals that do smart grid every day. That's their job. So we are building a smart grid at Middle Tennessee Electric. Now, what is a smart grid? It is connecting essentially the pieces of our electric system using fiber optics so that the system can be, can self-evaluate and even self-heal at a high level. Chattanooga EPB has done this, and we share notes with Chattanooga EPB. They're great friends of ours. We want to do the same thing at Middle Tennessee Electric, and we're doing that. We want to bring in Murfreesboro as part of that as well. And in our coming together, we would do just that. So smart grid is something that we have and we're working right now. Speaking of fiber, Middle Tennessee Electric owns a fiber company. It's called United Communications. And they also do broadband, high-speed internet, which of course Chattanooga EPB does as well. So we're eager to bring those capabilities to bear on behalf of the city of Murfreesboro. Very exciting. Finally, I'll mention, and I think Craig touched on sharing change in terms of a board member representation. Sharing change is our 501(c)(3), our charitable arm. It exists for the purpose of benefiting community causes and charities. We've given back to our communities more than $10 million over the last 15 years. We would love, and MED does a wonderful job in community engagement. We would love to join forces and make even more of a difference for the city of Murfreesboro. Just a couple more slides. Preparing for industry change, by the way, we've made these investments as well that could benefit the city of Murfreesboro, working with MED as we continue to build on these innovations. We have solar generation through a cooperative solar program. We want to build more. We are researching and have substation battery storage. We have a Tesla battery at our Rockville substation just down the road from here. We want to continue to build on that. Microgrid technology, and again, fiber broadband. So we're excited about those innovations and investments. We want to, we want to make them benefit the city of Murfreesboro as well. Okay, coming to the last slide, y'all, so bear with me. Coming together will be better together. We're very good right now. Middle Tennessee Electric and Murfreesboro Electric will never be run-of-the-mill utilities if we stay separate. Will never be average, will never be good. We're always going to be very good. There's too much rich history, we have too many things going for us, we got, our teams are too good. Will never be just very good, but together, just good. Always be very good, but together, we can be even better. We're better together. An important point regarding ownership. I know there's weight in the idea of disposing of an asset, one that's valuable, one that does a great job, and I can appreciate that. But the citizens of Murfreesboro, businesses and residents, would still have an ownership stake in their utility through the cooperative business model. Because when Murfreesboro residents and businesses become members of the cooperative, they have ownership in the cooperative, and that shows up in many ways fundamentally through voice in the governance. So there's still ownership, just in a different form. We could talk about economic development, maybe should a lot more. I'm going to just mention that I'm excited about the prospect of our collective resources, Murfreesboro Electric and Middle Tennessee Electric, bringing our collective efforts to bear to benefit the city of Murfreesboro from an economic development standpoint. I will proudly say that Middle Tennessee Electric has held up as a standard for economic development in the Tennessee Valley. And we want to work together with our friends at MED as we come together to make a difference for the city of Murfreesboro in particular. A lot to be said there. Finally, I'll say that, and I sincerely believe this, that neither utility can reach its potential separately. I don't think Middle Tennessee Electric can be who it could be, who it, to reach its ultimate potential without Murfreesboro Electric. And I don't think Murfreesboro Electric can reach its ultimate potential without Middle Tennessee Electric. We need each other. We're good now. We can be even better together. We're not a utility that stands still. I know that the city of Murfreesboro is not a city that stands still, and Murfreesboro Electric is not a utility that stands still. We want to take a step forward, and this would be one that would set us up for success for a long time. So council members, I would say to you, put us in a position to serve together and watch how great we can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And I'm happy to take questions after Mr. Tindles.
Okay. Mr. Tindle?
Well, I think at this point, before we go to the second part of our agenda, just answering any questions about the deal itself, how we would come together, how we'd work together, any of those questions from council would probably be a good time now.
I'll start. I've got a handful of just kind of detail-related questions. Just kind of comparing notes. Page one, we talk about Middle Tennessee Electric having 2,300 square miles of service territory, and then on page three, we're talking about it being 2,100 square miles of territory. Which is it?
It's 2,100. Yes, sir. 2,100. Yes, sir.
And along the same lines, and I guess this is an in-house question, but page one, we've got 49 square miles for MED, and we've got 39 square miles on page three there. I know the difference. Is it 39? Is it 49? Because I'm counting customers per square mile and mile line and that sort of thing, so.
I don't know. PD, do you know somewhere, somewhere in there, it's a jagged line, so it's hard to...
Those numbers are published.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
49.
Mr. Jones, you mentioned the duplication of MED assets and Middle Tennessee Electric assets, both sides of the street. You used Compton Road as an example. Are you saying that we'd remove some of that duplication, or are you saying we'd prevent duplication moving forward?
Well, it would be, it would be both, but the duplication of existing facilities over time and case-by-case, we would deal with those. In the example I used, Mr. Martin, was a road widening. So when there's a road project, we have to work with the state in most cases to take the lines down and build new lines. So that would be an ideal time to build one set rather than two.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question on that one and then go back to you?
Yep.
You know, there's a lot of interest, I think, I've heard it for years, about burying utilities. If we decided to attack one of the, you know, a stretch of road or whatever, would there be any of the same removal of duplication? I mean, would it be cheaper to bury the utilities if we only have to bury one set once we take down two sets?
Well, it's depending on the case. When you're talking about heavy feeders, it's definitely not cheaper. It's far, far more expensive. But now, Middle Tennessee Electric, you know, we, if you want to say we prefer underground, and certainly when we can use it, we do, we build more underground than we do overhead. But again, if I could, Mr. LaLance, it is a case-by-case situation. If the city has an important project they want to see get done, then let's talk about it. Let's figure out how we can make it happen.
Well, I, sorry, Ronnie, I just thought that might be a duplication or a same topic.
And one thing, Chris, you and I, first off, thanks for all the time you've invested in this. I know, I think all of us feel very appreciative for your interest and for the time you and your team have invested. So I appreciate that very much, and I know our staff has worked hard as well. I mentioned to you in some of the discussions we had, my concern about our ability to prioritize what we do in Murfreesboro, having our own utility. And while I know Middle Tennessee Electric, obviously, this is your home base, and you have been here, obviously, you're, you have more members to prioritize than just Murfreesboro. As someone who's ultimately having to make a decision on this, what comfort can you give me about that from the standpoint of, you know, obviously, I'm always going to care about Murfreesboro more than I care about the rest of the members?
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, thank you for the compliments. I would say that, a few things, Mr. Martin, I would say that, number one, that I'm in town, you can find me. Yeah. So that's number one. And we have, I have an vested interest here, of course. Again, I'm a citizen, want to see Murfreesboro be successful. We are going to have the bulk of our, if we come together, we're going to have more than 500 employees. The bulk of those are going to be working in the city of Murfreesboro. So an example that I might use, and please ask another question if it helped clarify, but I know that MED did a tremendous job about 10 years ago when a tornado came through on Good Friday. I was in Murfreesboro at the time, and MED did a tremendous job in storm restoration. But a question I've heard sometimes is that would the same priority be given in a situation like that?
Right.
And my answer to that is that, you know, the same MED team that is working on their system, knows their system so well, is still going to be there, but the difference is going to be, we're going to have the whole, the rest of the resources at Middle Tennessee Electric in a situation like that to be brought to bear to assist at a moment's notice. So there's that, there's more resiliency. But from the standpoint of the city of Murfreesboro, I would, I would call your attention to the fact that, again, there's going to be, I think, more focused interest just simply because of where we are. And now, we want to, we want to do the best job we can for everybody we can. I mean, we're, like you pointed out, we serve a number of members, we want to balance all the considerations. But when someone comes to us and asks us to work with them on something, we're the kind of electric utility that wants to see customers' needs and expectations met. So when those kinds of projects are on your mind, they come up, then let's talk about them, and let's set a plan, and let's figure out how to get it done. If it's the right thing for the community, we're going to be supportive.
I've got a couple more, and I won't take too much time, but you and I also talked about, you know, underground lines. Rick touched on this just a little bit. You know, I think moving forward, that's something that would be a priority to me from a development standard as we do different things. And I know I made the statement to you, which I wasn't sure of, but I felt like that that would be cheaper for us to do if we owned our utility rather than us having to pay you to do that. And I think there was some uncertainty of whether my assessment was accurate of that or not. Any comfort you can give me about that moving forward related to things we will do as we continue to grow and invest in infrastructure?
In infrastructure?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would, I would say a couple of things. One is that, again, the fundamental point about if we want to see something done, let's talk about it, let's figure it out. And that's a willingness that's going to be there, and again, we're in town. Our corporate headquarters is always going to be here, so let's talk about it. But two, we exist under the same regulatory umbrella as MED does. So, you know, there are things that TVA looks at from the standpoint of use of funds, and we have to meet those kinds of obligations. So again, from the standpoint of underground, it is a preferred method that we're going to use. The situations, though, are going to be case-by-case. And if there's something very important, Mr. Martin, if I may be so bold as to make a potential suggestion.
Yes, sir.
We are, we're talking about significant proceeds here, and I know Craig is going to come up and talk about it in just a moment, but if there is a particular project or projects that the city wants to prioritize, then we have those proceeds as the potential, as a basis or a start anyway, to do some of the kind of projects that we're talking about. So let's, let's figure out a way to make it work. And again, we're going to be, we're going to be flexible. So let's talk about it.
Can I, I'm going to, again, tap into your question here. I'm going to ask it a little different way, and maybe a little more straightforwardly is, you know, and this is the way it gets approached with me, is basically, you know, if, if we need a, I think we just went on a series of replacing poles, you know, and there would be other things that might happen where we need a line stretched or moved over by the airport or whatever. You know, the electric department charges the city in some, some of those types of projects, and there's a rate for that. Is that rate going to be, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to get ourselves in a position where it's just substantially more? I mean, I don't think the TVA, does the TVA manage what rate you charge for labor and stuff like that?
Well, they are a rate regulator, but as far...
Not electric rates. I mean, like, labor rates, service rates.
They sit over all of that. But what we're talking about is, you know, there's not going to be just any significant change in how that's done. You know, we exist simply to capture what it costs to render service and then charge for the revenue, and no more than what that cost is. So we're seeking simply to capture the cost, and that's, that's the same way that MED operates. So we would do the same.
Okay. I've got two more real quick. One, and mostly these I've asked, but do you know, Mr. Jones, off the top of your head, and we know how many, we're going to add about 60... and we know how many, we're going to add about 67,000 accounts, I guess, if this happens. How many accounts are currently in Rutherford County for Middle Tennessee Electric? I mean, are we doubling that capacity? What does that look like?
For Rutherford County, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
It would be an approximate doubling, yeah. In terms of the county outside the city of Murfreesboro for Middle Tennessee Electric, for Rutherford County, there are about 65,000 accounts right now.
Great. And last question, will Murfreesboro citizens, will they have, pay a fee? Because we're sort of sensitive these days about fees related to everything. Will they have a membership fee when they join Middle Tennessee Electric? How will that work?
No, they will not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
To follow up on what Ronnie and Rick have both brought up. The concern for the future is obviously underground. And that's something that we would desire from an aesthetic standpoint. But in the current condition that we have, most of our lines are still above ground. And I think one of the reasons that we have a phenomenal record in the city of Murfreesboro with MED of not having outages is because of the maintenance or tree trimming that they do. What is Middle Tennessee Electric's philosophy on preventing maintenance?
Well, we believe in it, absolutely. So, but as far as right-of-way maintenance is very important, Mr. Smotherman. So we have significant investments in our right-of-way maintenance. Now, there are different, you know, the systems have different voltages, so the requirements aren't exactly the same. But with regard to how MED maintains its rights-of-way, again, we're going to come together as we transition and think about what the best practices are for both of our utilities, and we're going to do what's best for those utilities. Their reliability is tremendous. So Middle Tennessee Electric is, you know, this is something we take seriously because we have a lot of rural territory and a lot of trees out there, as you know, Mr. Smotherman. So we have made investments in having arborists on staff. So we actually have arborists on staff. We have a contractor with someone who goes door to door in regards to right-of-way. Now, this is our service territory. I'm not saying it would have to be the same for MED. But we're also, we've also stepped up to become what's called a tree-lined designated utility by one of the National Arbor Culture Associations. And we also have cities that are what are called Tree Line USA cities. And we'd be happy to work with the city of Murfreesboro to see that it would reach a similar designation. So there are certain practices that we have to abide by in order to maintain those designations. I'm not sure if I'm going the way you're looking for for the question, but that's what I would offer. It's a significant investment, though.
I think you answered it. It sounds like you've got a tree maintenance plan and with an arborist and stuff on board. It sounds like the emphasis has already been put on it. Two, you mentioned the broadband and the future. And now I'm going to let you look into your crystal ball. How far, what does the future mean? Does that mean that maybe we would be with broadband service in five years, 10 years? How far into the future? And I'm asking you for a guesstimation because I know there's not going to be an exact date that you can say, "We're going to do it this day."
Well, my staff can't wait to hear what I have to say. I can, again, so, I mean, it is a heck of a question. So, one, you know, we're certainly committed, Mr. Smotherman, in thinking about just Middle Tennessee Electric right now. From a broadband and high-speed internet standpoint, as you probably know, but it's surprising how many people don't understand. There are a number of people who are just outside our cities who don't have access to broadband. And so a fundamental exercise that we are undertaking is we are trying to expand broadband service across our entire service territory, but especially for those who are unserved or underserved. Now, what we're seeking to be ultimately, from a strategic standpoint, is to be a provider of internet services that, and this is United Communications, that is competitive wherever we are. Now, I mentioned smart grid a while ago. So a smart grid needs fiber to work. So we, and if we come together with Murfreesboro Electric, we'll be focused on bringing fiber and building a smart grid within the city of Murfreesboro, too. That will afford us the opportunity to render services. Now, again, I know there are service providers who do a fine job right now, but oftentimes I'll hear people about, they want more choice. So that's something that we can look to make happen.
Mr. Jones, we'll forward you every email that we get from the residents who are asking for those choices. So we'll just start sending that to you now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Are you down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris, I've got two things. I think you touched on one, emergency operation capacity. You touched on that, and then the trees. I got a call today from a young lady. She told me she was 79 years old, she lived on Main Street. If we sold, her worst fear is you're going to come down through there and cut all the trees off down Main Street. Is that true?
No, it is not true. Now, of course, we maintain trees, so I can't speak for every single tree.
Okay.
But, you know, I would assume we would do something very similar to what MED does in their maintenance down Main Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask a few questions, Chris. I want to say also how, in the last few months, I have read and learned more about public utilities and particularly electric service than I ever thought or imagined I could. And your, our staff and your staff and yourself have been very helpful to help us. This is a momentous decision for us to make. I can't think of anything that could have, in the long term, any more dramatic impact in the short term, but in the long term, on our community. But while there are a lot of broad 20,000-foot things to consider in the midst of this transaction, I think most people out there have a couple of questions that they'd like to ask. And PD, if I could get you to come up here, too, I'd like to have you both there to ask these questions. PD, I want you to answer this first. How are, in the present model, how do you establish rates? What is my bill going to be every month? How do you establish the rates that are going to be paid?
Well, we're constantly doing cost of service studies and looking at our expenditures, our long-term expenditures, what those are going to be. And, you know, of course, that's going to be paid for with rate income. So we have to have rates that are, can provide those, the growth that we're experiencing. So we look at all those things and we do long-term studies and we identify if we need additional rate increases or maybe decreases. We absorbed two TVA wholesale increases within the last five years, but our financial position is strong right now. Don't anticipate anything negative toward rates going forward for a while.
Well, I guess I'm asking more than the specific. What is the process that you establish what the rate's going to be?
We would submit, we have to submit any rate change to TVA and they have to approve it.
And they are approved by your board?
Our board would first approve it.
That's, they're approved by your board and submitted to TVA?
Submitted to TVA.
And they have to be validated? That process has to be validated by TVA, right?
Right. And it has to be supported. When we submit it to TVA, we submit a cost of service study that, you know, outlines why we're asking for what we're asking. And so, you know, that's just part of the regulatory process that TVA has.
And what is your motivation to keep the price down? Why would you want to keep my rates as low as possible? Why don't you want to make as much money as you can make?
Well, first of all, Mr. Shakler, we're not-for-profit.
There you go.
So we're not trying to make money. We don't have investors, we don't have stockholders that we have to consider. We're charging the lowest rate feasible that we can operate our system and provide the kind of service that our citizens expect, but we do it at the lowest possible cost. So that's the target for us.
Thank you, PD. Chris, would you come up here and do the same thing?
My box of them standing beside PD.
I've got one back here you can borrow.
Could you answer those same questions? How do you determine what the rates are going to be? And what's the motivation to keep them up?
Yeah, it's the same story. Now, and PD, I got some water, so I didn't hear the first part of what you said. But, you know, we do cost of service studies to determine what the cost is and what the fair cost is across all of our rate classes and to make sure that we're recovering sufficient rates simply to make sure that costs are taken care of. And with regard to the motivations, again, as an electric cooperative, the same for a municipal system, we exist to benefit and serve our customers. For us, it's our members. So we want to make sure that we're doing the best job we can for them. And our mission is about reliable, affordable, safe electricity and outstanding member service. So that affordability piece is important. It needs to be balanced against the other ones, but we exist solely to benefit our membership.
So the same process occurs, you're submitting it, approved by your board, submitted to TVA. TV has, TVA has to authorize any rates that are charged?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shakler, that's right.
And the reason you don't make as much money as you can is because?
Because we're not-for-profit. It's the same thing. And again, it's existing solely to benefit our members.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones? If this deal goes through, how much in tax dollars will you all be paying the city?
How many tax, well, we have what we refer to as ad verum taxes, which are an equivalent property tax. So that's what we will be paying in perpetuity for the city, just like we pay to the other cities that we have, where we cover, where we have service territory.
Okay. In benefits, when we're looking at benefits, right now, our employees, and correct me, PD, if I'm wrong on any of this. Our employees with the electric department, they get five weeks of vacation. Is that correct? Well, I guess I'm going to need you to come up.
Ms. Skels, they can earn up to five weeks vacation after a number of years. After 15 years, they can, they'll, they can take five weeks vacation. So it's staggered throughout their career.
Okay, Mr. Jones, what about right now, what a vacation? I'm looking at benefits now, I'm comparing. What about vacation you all have?
Well, Ms. Skels Harris, if we're going to talk about benefits, which I'm happy to do, we're going to have a very nuanced and detailed conversation because something that we've been working very hard to do, and I'm personally committed to, as I've told you before, is to make sure that we come together, that the benefits that MED employees have earned are going to be maintained, as far as what, if, they're going to lose something in the translation. Now, we do benefits a little differently. If you look at our benefit packages from a distance, they look extremely similar. But the way we package them, specifically package them, is a little bit different. So as we brought this together, and again, I've been working, and my team and PD and his team have been working together to create what would be a benefits package going forward for the larger utility, what we feel confident in saying is that if you look at the new benefits package, both MED team members and MTMC team members, employees, are going to have a better benefits package on the other side than they do right now.
Okay, so I don't need to talk to you about, I know we get 11 holidays, and what do you all get right now?
Holidays?
Yes, sir.
I think it, well, what is our, we have 10 holidays, yes, but we have floating holidays, so we're going to look to make that even in the process.
I'll let you all talk about the benefits when you get it together. The pension plan, I know you said after three years about going with a financial institution, right? Now, number one, what institution would that be? Do you know?
I'll answer that. It depends on the market. There's several financial institutions that do what's called a pension risk transfer, and that's what we'd be looking at. They're large insurance companies generally, and they purchase a pension plan and then run out the pension plan over many decades to make sure all the benefits are paid. So we don't know right now. We will test the market. And that's why there's a three-year period of time that we have where Middle Tennessee is committed to assist in any kind of costs of transfer. But we won't know who we transfer it to. It'll be a large financial institution like an insurance company.
And will, after that three years, with all the employees eligible, be able to roll over into this financial institution or will some of them be kind of hanging?
It doesn't change anything at all. Instead of getting a check from the city of Murfreesboro, they'll get a check from a large insurance company. It'd be the exact same benefit.
Okay. I understand if the deal goes through, it's going to be installments. Has anyone checked with a comptroller to see if it's legal to make installment payments?
Yes, we've covered that. And we have a legal opinion, and Mr. Tucker can speak to that in more detail. But yes, we've, it's not, it's not an issue.
Okay, then my next question, I guess, if it goes through. Why are we agreeing to installments instead of, why not say, pay us our entire fee? I mean, I'm just looking at maybe, like buying a house. You know, I go, I give you a little bit now, and over the next five years, I'm going to pay you a little bit, a little bit. But then, I know we have this promissory note that we're going to have, but what if something happens and they stop paying us that amount of money? Why can't we get the whole amount upfront?
Well, there's several answers to the question, and I'll do it from a city's perspective. And Chris wants to, he can talk about it from his perspective. But from the city's perspective, we will have a secured interest in that. Middle Tennessee is obviously an excellent credit risk, so there's not a lot of concern there. But we do have a secured interest, which gives us some protection if there is somehow a bankruptcy that would occur in the future. And we don't anticipate that that would ever occur. As far as structuring the payments out, I talked about before about balancing the interests of ratepayers and citizens, and it's a very important part of the considerations when we went into this. And this assists in making that balance. The other benefit that accrues to the city is we really can't invest that kind of money that earns any type of return. Buy investments that are very low in the amount that they would return on us. And the interest rate, which is pretty close to our cost of capital, the interest rate that Middle Tennessee has agreed to pay, does accrue quite a bit of benefit to us in the form of interest, $57 million over the 15-year period of time. And it allows us to better manage the cash flows that comes in. We wouldn't be able to do $245 million of capital improvement projects. It'd be impossible. So, you know, we, having it structured out over a period of time and knowing that we can, if we need to, securitize that income stream and get lump sums of money if we need it for capital improvement projects, it allows us to control when the money comes in, what projects we're putting it towards, so the money's not sitting there not earning what it could otherwise earn.
Speaking of the money coming in, what are we going to do with the money?
Well, we're going to talk about that in part two.
It's in the second part.
Okay. And I'm just trying to wrap my little feeble mind around the whole thing because I'm making a comparison, I'm doing a chart, what we are doing, what you all are doing, what's the best thing for our ratepayers here. But in my mind, I'm looking at a department that's been in existence for 80 years. They have $43 million in savings and only has a debt of $4,000. And in my mind, I'm just trying to say, why would we want to sell that entity? And once all the money comes, the money is gone. So, and we have, whereas with the electric department, we have constant money coming in. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just trying to.
I think we're going to talk about that in the next, the next section. And I think it's $4 million. We've got more than $4,000 in debt, don't we?
I mean, I meant $4 million. I meant $4 million.
So, yeah, I think we're going to get that in the next, the next, on why and what would be the benefit.
Oh, y'all don't have to be together anymore.
Hey, Chris, I just want to, or Mr. Jones, I just want to say one thing. You know, we've spent a lot of time, I think, as a, talking about this over the last four or five years. And I want to personally tell you, being very naive when I was elected back in '14, that, you know, the first thing that happens, the first year as you're a mayor, you end up having people come and ask you, probably it's the same thing as I knew elected council members, you have all the people who come and ask you questions about things that were talked about under other people. And so, you know, when originally the conversation to talk about maybe where there's some synergies, and I sat down and I'm like, well, absolutely, let's talk about it, not knowing what would happen when that conversation occurred. And what I want to tell you, and the only reason that I feel comfortable of what we're talking about is because you're standing here. You have been honorable, ethical, straightforward. There's not been one time that I feel like that you're... There's not been one time that I feel like that you're talking, or you're giving something that has ulterior motives behind it. And I can't say that that has been the case throughout this entire process. I feel comfortable that you, in, in the way that you've handled yourself, truly want the best for what's Murfreesboro, the employees of MED, and, and not only that, the employees of Middle Tennessee Electric. So, you are a very big part of this process on making sure that the residents understand that if this process does occur, who's gonna be leading them in the future. And that's sitting on the power board. We have that with MED right now. Uh, and if it was someone that the council or staff didn't feel comfortable with, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And I think that speaks greatly, as your board members are here. I'm, I'm not on Chris's payroll for, for what's happening moving forward, but you do a phenomenal job, and we appreciate it.
That's very kind of you to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tindall, you wanna move? Yes?
I got a few questions. Hey, Chris, sorry. Sorry, man. I apologize. I, I just, um, was trying to give them time to ask questions too, and a few follow-up questions. Couple of them be easier than the others. Um, first of all, are, when, when you look at your districts, are there any rate differences? I know you have different rate classes, you know, commercial may be different for this, or industrial and residential. Are residential rates the same for all of your, or, uh, all of your members, or all of your residential customers throughout the whole system?
Yes, sir.
So, I, you know, look, I don't mind saying, it's part of the reason, you know, you, we wouldn't want, we wanna make, I guess I'm trying to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden, the, the people in the Murfreesboro sub-district aren't paying a rate that's forty percent higher, you know, 'cause we hear people, well, all that's gonna happen is they're gonna gang these rates up to pay, get the money back, you know? That can't happen-
No, sir.
-in the specific geographic.
That's something we wouldn't do, but it's something TVA would either, so, that's right. Now, we'll have-
I apologize if it came off as, uh, as a-
But when we come together, to, to your question though, when we first come together, our rates, again, kinda like the benefits, when you look at them side by side from a distance, incredibly similar, but you'll pour them closer, and we package them differently. So, as we come together, rates will be the very same the first year. We'll have a five-year period to bring those together.
Well, I, I do wanna say too publicly, um, for the folks watching and listening, that, that one of the, the big, you know, something that really did tug at me months ago about this was the fact of wondering whether or not what would happen to rates, not necessarily just geographically, but across the, you know, across the spectrum. Was there some way that, you know, that this is gonna create substantially higher rates for everybody in the system? You know, one of the things that brought me a lot of comfort was the knowledge, you know, learning that TVA has to literally approve this from a standpoint of, it will not create this. I was never gonna be able to, as a part-time council member, figure out what the impact of rates is gonna be. And, and one of the things that I'll say, it's kinda, um, just to get this out there on the table before I get my other questions, is, you know, what you don't know ten years from now is dangerous, and what I mean by that is it relates to rates. All, if, if this transition occurs, transaction occurs, all we're gonna see is some increases from Middle Tennessee Electric. I mean, you know, that's, that happens typically with, with MED also, right? Most years, there's an increase. But, you know, uh, there, there's gonna be a risk of, you know, people are gonna see the increases come from Middle Tennessee Electric if this happens, and they're gonna go, well, you know, look, they're raising our rates. Well, it's probably pretty likely that we would've had to raise those rates anyway on the MED side, so there's gonna be a little bit of that down the road, that we just need to all be prepared for and understand. That's why I know it's, you know, that's why I feel like it's such a big deal that TVA literally has to say that this is a net benefit for the ratepayer-
Absolutely.
-and is not a detractor in any way. So, anyway, for people out there to know that. Um, so that's a pretty easy one. I want to, um, make sure and clarify something about the board member language that we've seen today. We, we've had discussions, and it's gone multiple directions, and, and what it reads here, I wanna make sure I understand this. When we're talking about a certain number from Murfreesboro and a certain number from there, um, am I understanding that there's gonna be now twelve board members on the board? And that is gonna continue to be twelve members, or is it gonna go to eleven after there's some reapportionment?
Well, what, what we fundamentally committed to is that there will be two board members from the city of Murfreesboro. So, we're gonna have to work together to carve out the city of Murfreesboro, create two sub-districts.
Two new board members.
Two new board members.
Okay.
Right. Now, and they will stay in perpetuity. Now, over time, if the board chooses to reduce the, then the total number of twelve to eleven, they can, but those are gonna be in, in existence in perpetuity. Does that make sense?
Yes, so it could go to eleven down the road, but all twelve board members will be voting on it going to eleven.
Yes.
So, our representation-
And we'll always have two, I think is what you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
Sorry, Mr. Martin?
We will, the city of Murfreesboro will always have two.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, ultimately, the entire membership votes on bylaw changes. That's what will be required for something like you're talking about. So, it will be suggested to the members, to the membership by the board, but approved by the board.
Let me ask one question too on that. Um, who regulates the redistricting that you're going to propose? That, who is the regulating authority?
Well, that, that's the board of directors in the membership. That's, that's local control, Mr. Jacklin.
Okay.
So, that's where that, that takes place, and the membership, the total membership approves that, and I say the total. The total has the opportunity to vote, but in order for our bylaws to change, the membership has to vote to approve that.
And that is going to happen in August at the annual meeting, or what?
That, that is what we have committed to. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, I got two more, uh, I think. I'll, I'm not gonna commit to only, I'm not gonna commit to only two more, 'cause I never only have two more, um, but I got two more topics to bring up, and, and we're getting increasingly difficult degrees, okay? We're, uh, so, sorry, but, um, and this may actually be easy, but I don't know. We, we talked about this the other day, and, um, I'm not sure, I, I never got an answer on it, but the, the, the benefits discussion, as it relates to the pension, about the only thing that I had, uh, the, well, not about the only thing, but where, where I was wanting to, one of the things I wanted to make sure of was sort of a, from a vesting standpoint, when, you know, if you've got a twenty-year employee of MED, that, you know, maybe only has a few years left till they get their maximum number, this converts over, you know, how are, you know, if, if, let's say they will get their max number in five more years at MED. I shouldn't say twenty years. Let's just say they're five years away from their max number at MED. When they transition over, are they gonna have to be at Middle Tennessee Electric for fifteen years just to make up a five-year gap that they would lose by doing this? Does that make sense, the way I've articulated it?
Are you talking about vesting, or about the?
Well, I think vesting has to do with it, you know, like how quickly will they vest into the pension plan at the new organization?
So, I may tap someone to help me with this one, Mr. LaLance, and Gray, if you would, where is Gray? So, congratulations, Gray, come on up. So, um, we've been working this quite a bit, and again, one thing I would underscore is that from a benefits, overall benefits package perspective, we're gonna have a package that overall is better for everybody, and I'm, I'm pretty confident in that. And before I ask Gray to speak, one thing that, if I may, Mr. LaLance and Ms. Harris spoke too with regard to pension, one thing that I don't think we need to lose sight of in going forward is that, um, you know, MED stopped its, or froze its pension plan, how many years ago, PD, was that, uh, so, for, for, for entrance into it? So, we have a pension plan where those employees from MED who don't have a pension right now will have a pension as they come over.
Yeah.
I think that's important to underscore.
Yeah.
So, Gray, could you help me out?
So, Gray, do you understand what I'm getting at on that? I apologize. I did, probably did not say it well, but I just, I'm trying to make sure that, you know, somebody who's sitting here two or three years from retirement, they've got their stuff all lined up, they've, you know, everything's in perfect, you know, planned out, and all of a sudden, this happens, and now, instead of two or three years, it's five, ten years to where they net out the same, is-
Sure. So, so the existing pension benefit will remain with them. They're not losing any benefit. That'll be managed by the other party.
Mm-hmm.
They'll start gaining a new pension benefit with us. So, we are honoring all their years of service at MED towards our pension benefit.
Okay.
So, they have full vesting, full entrance immediately into both our pension and 401K plan.
Yeah, that's why I said it was a vesting question, 'cause I figured, you know, if they had, if you had to wait ten years to vest, then they wouldn't be able to take care of their stuff in two or three years, you see? Okay, all right, very good. One more, Mr. Jones. Um, so, you know, look, this is a, this is a heartburn issue for me on this, the transaction, okay, and it's fiber. Um, you know, I, I'm trying to listen to people. We, we've, you know, you were kind enough to give me some time the other day and talk through some, a lot of this stuff. That was something I brought up the other day, and, um, I, I, I don't know that there's a better way. I know how to say it, other than that it's just a heartburn thing for me, that, the, the idea of that we've just made this investment in this, you know, quasi-loop, or whatever you wanna call it, the, the network part of this fiber, um, that we've spent to get our buildings connected and all that kinda stuff, and there's multiple reasons for that. You know, I asked you guys the other day about the valuation inside of these numbers, to, to what valuation we put in there, and I guess, you know, I'm just gonna throw this out there. I don't know that, you know, we can, we can iron this out tonight. This isn't one of those things, but just wanna put out there just this idea of, you know, whether or not, um, there would be a possibility of, say, just removing the, the valuation piece, us keeping ownership of the fiber, the, the network that we've built, leasing it to you guys for five years for a very cheap rate, let you guys still use it, maintain it, until we can kinda figure out and make sure that we're not, you know, kind of undervaluing the future value of the fiber. I mean, that's, the heartburn for me is the future value, and, and what it means to economic development, to, you know, our city contracts with broadband providers, you know, all those things that we've been dealing with here lately give me that heartburn, and so, I probably, you know, the reason, it, probably one of the reasons that the lease idea resonates with me so well is because it just sort of buys time, and part of that's probably because I feel like I need time to learn more before I relinquish something, you know, that I think might be of future value to me. So, that's not something I don't, you know, I, I don't wanna be up here necessarily negotiating something like that in this setting or whatever, but I'm just trying to throw out to you something that's a, it, you know, it's still an obstacle for me, the, give, you know, selling the fiber for what the valuations are listed in this book is an obstacle for me. I'll just put it to you that simply. And so, I, and I think really keeping it and leasing it is, is something that would be a, an acceptable thing for me to consider, and something that might buy us all some time to figure out if that's, you know, if it's the right thing to include that, if we can still have synergies with United, and, you know, I, I don't really know all that, but I, I'm putting that out there on the table for some folk, you know, for all of us to think about, you guys to think about. And may, I don't, I don't know that I can learn everything I need to know about fiber and what it means to the future of this city in the next few weeks. But that would sort of give us a few years, and we could certainly come back. If it's a three-year lease, two-year lease, five-year lease, whatever, we come back a couple of years later and decide, hey, okay, well, you, you know, we don't think we need it. Do you wanna purchase it? And by the way, I'm talking about cutting some value off, if we do that, reducing the sale, the, the price number, okay?
Yes.
By what, by what it's in the appraisal. So, anyway, I, I'm, I'm saying that is the, the plainest I can say it, you know, and that I, I don't know some of these things, but it, it's a heartburn issue for you.
What was the, did the appraisal pull that out as a value? Do you, do you have that in the, in the valuation? Was that a-
That was, that was part of the valuation, yes, sir. We'll have to look at-
We have a number.
There, there should be a number, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, yes.
That may be a-
Well, there, there's a couple of issues. One, one, uh, and we talked about some of this before, is that fiber for us, we can't go into the fiber business. We won't be able to, to commercially provide fiber. People talk about Chattanooga and EPB. That can't be replicated. Laws have changed. We can't, we can't do that again. And we, and if we don't have an electric system, we don't, we can't provide fiber. So, all we'd be talking about is fiber for our own use. That's it. Right now, the fiber's dark. It's planned to be dark, uh, which means it's not being used. It's planned to be dark for a while, is, 'cause we've gone and negotiated some with Comcast, and I think that's been good. It does connect all the substations, which is important, obviously, to the electric system as it, as it works. It doesn't connect to all the buildings. It wouldn't connect to all the buildings that we have as a city, because physically, we couldn't get there. So, we had alternatives dealing with sale, uh, service and, and other things to, to try and close the gap, which is a long way, I guess, of saying it doesn't serve us all that well right now. Uh, not to say we couldn't expand it out, I suppose, at some point in time. And the last thing that I would say is, we don't have the expertise in-house to, to run fiber. We would have to hire a lot of expertise in-house if we had a fiber network to be able to manage the fiber network.
Can we add the cost of the mouse to the bill that-
I don't know, I'll pay that too.
I hate that mouse. I'm glad he did it.
Two four, two forty-five and twenty dollars.
And Mr. Jones, I failed to, when I was speaking with you, Mr. Jones, to thank you also. It was so funny, right before the meeting started, Shane said almost the same thing I said to you out there, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Skels Harris.
Let's do this, 'cause Rick's brought up a point. I think Craig, it'd be good for you to get us some more information on that. I, I've learned a lot about light and dark, or lit and dark fiber after we met with Comcast, to see what the cost now is going from operating a dark line to us actually having some of their equipment in our buildings on what, that, that's a significant savings that we talked about. But I really wanna, we've only got thirty minutes left to be able to discuss, I, I think, the other piece of this, which is what happens with the proceeds, so we probably need to get to that before our, our council meeting starts at, at seven. So, Craig, let's, thank you, Mr. Jones.
And we can, and we can do that pretty efficiently, I think. You, you've, you've been provided before, uh, models on, on what it looks like, what we could do with the, the money, uh, the proceeds from the sale and the CIP, and, um, and so, uh, what I've done is I, I've kind of slimmed those down to something that's a little, perhaps, easier to follow along than some of the other more robust models that you provided.
Just reminded, we have public comment at six-thirty, so what I'm gonna, we don't-
I'll move that off.
Okay. Perfect, even better.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, never mind.
Sorry.
So, that's all right. So, so from a financial standpoint, to take a look at, and this kind of goes to Vice Mayor's question about, uh, Middle Tennessee, or, um, MED rather, and, and its financial benefits that it provides to the city. The only thing that, that, that Middle Tenne, uh, I'm sorry, I wanna do this. MED provides to the city is tax-equivalent payments under the TVA power purchase contract. That's the only thing that it puts into the city's operating budget each year. If we take a look at the numbers, what, one of the ways to, to, to value a transaction is to take the numbers, the income stream over time, and, uh, change, and, 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 uh, put that into present value terms, so that we're talking about today's dollars, and then we can compare, uh, that over, over a period, um, as to what it's worth today. So, um, Middle, or, I'm sorry, MED, um, pays to the city approximately three million dollars in its tax-equivalent payments under the contract, and it does that, as long as the power purchase contract will assume for, for value in the system, that that's gonna go on forever. Uh, and if you discount that at three-point-three, uh, our cost of capital, it equates to about ninety-one million dollars in present value terms today. Now, as, as, as Chris said, um, Middle Tennessee doesn't pay tax-equivalent payments. They pay, essentially, they pay property tax. And if you took the, uh, current book value of MED's assets, and you transfer that over and, and do a rough calculation on what it would pay, what it would produce in property tax, you can estimate it to about one-point-eight on a conservative basis, about one-point-eight per year that they would pay, and that's property tax, so it would be paid in perpetuity. And the value of that perpetuity, the same discount rate is, is fifty-five million dollars. And then you ta, take a look at the transaction itself, and we've talked about that. It's forty-three million dollar payments up, up, up front right now, seventeen-three a year, pay that for fifteen years, and the value of that's the two forty-five is the value today of that, of that transaction. Those together are three hundred million dollars in present value terms of what we're talking about in the MED transaction, as compared to the tax-equivalent payments that come to the city from MED. So, MED accounts for itself, Vice Mayor, as an enterprise fund. It's, it's financial, um, benefit to the city is only the tax-equivalent payment. Everything else goes back into factoring their rate payments and, and making sure that they're running efficiently. So, what does that mean as far, as far as the CIP, and how's it helped the CIP? Well, this is a chart that does a comparison on, on, um, what we could do with a certain segment of the CIP. We've talked about, you've seen numbers on the CIP. You understand that it's, it's a large number that we've recommended over the next five years, some of which is funded. It's about four-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars that's unfunded right now in recommended projects. Of course, we'll sharpen the pencil on that every year. Council will make decisions on it every year, and eliminate projects, defer projects, so that number can obviously change, but that's, that's what's in the CIP right now. but, that's what's in the CIP right now. So, for the purpose of this model, we just assumed that we really sharpened our pencil, made very hard decisions, looked at very, the projects that we have now recommended, and get down to about three hundred and five million dollars in CIP over the next five years. And I will say, that portion of that, the big portion of that CIP, that we've scheduled is for roadways, sixty-seven percent of the amount of the money that we're talking in CIP are roadways. But you also have public safety in there, so you have new fire halls, fire equipment, police vehicles, police equipment, you have a lot of other things in there. Some of it's heavy equipment, with solid waste, for example, so as long as you run a solid waste, we need to buy the trucks, have the facility that we're going to have on that, to be able to provide that service to the citizens. In short, there's a lot in that CIP that we just have to do, if we're going to continue service, if we're not going to cut down on service, just to maintain what we have, and to address the needs that the community really, really needs. But, let's assume we do three hundred and five million over the next five years, right now, based on our current tax rate that we're bringing in, you'd have about twenty-five million dollars, we could estimate, about twenty-five million dollars available to put into CIP, which means you need to finance two hundred and eighty million dollars of that. So, in financing the two hundred and eighty million dollars, that you would have about twenty-three point five million dollars in payments every year, in over fifteen years, which is the term we normally do our financing for, that would be, you'd be paying about seventeen, or, I'm sorry, seventy-two million dollars in interest, and, just to work. What that means, with, relative to our property rates, about forty cents on a hundred, on a hundred dollar of assessed value, is what that twenty-three million dollar looks like. So, we'd either have that type of increase, even through equalization, or, we'd need to find that type of increase, or decrease, in the amount of expenses that we have in our operating budget, and able to accommodate that. If we had a sale, and we did the same amount in our CIP over the next five years, we'd have, obviously, the two hundred and forty-five million dollars that we could, we could, we could securitize and have available to us if we needed it. That leaves about sixty million dollars in CIP needs. Payment on the sixty million would be five million, and you'd pay fifteen point four million dollars in interest, over that fifteen-year period, and we could accommodate that, without any type of additional burden to the property tax rate. So, that's, that's an example, that's a model. You know, the thing about models is, first thing you learn about models is, they're not accurate. No, they're never accurate, because there's too many factors involved in it, so, but it gives you, too many assumptions, but it gives you, it gives you the ability to see, and, as an example, an illustration, of what this type of funding could do on our CIP. Obviously, council will need to look at it, make choices, we go through every year, so I'm not suggesting that this is the actual numbers, but it does.
One thing I want to ask you about this, and I, but I think it will make this thing more accurate, is from a standpoint of the input is the same on each side of the equation, so the assumptions you make over here are the same as the assumptions you made over here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, so, we're dealing with the same three hundred and five million, whatever.
Mr. Tindall, one thing that we don't take into account, as well, in the model, that if sixty-seven percent of, or sixty, sixty-seven percent are roadway projects.
Sixty-seven percent are roadway projects.
To make sure the residents understand, that, none of that has really been approved. You have some past CIPs, but that all still has to come to the council to make the decisions on, on how that, what projects move forward with. The point I wanted to make, that, you know, Cherry Lane, we've talked about being the new gateway to Murfreesboro, or to, to the north side of town, or off of eight forty, we're not, we don't take into account, or you've not had any assumptions that you've put in, on what specifically, just that road would create an additional property tax revenue, and sales tax revenue, if hotels and developments and those things come along those roadways.
Yeah, if we go back to the revenue comparisons, it doesn't include any economic development revenues that would come in, so, you'd have the long-term, if you take, if you take the money and you make investments in CIP projects, that produce an economic development benefit, additional tax revenues, for example, like a gateway to, on Cherry Lane, obviously, those would carry forward for many years, and you could add that to the, to the number itself. So, it gives us a lot more opportunity to do a lot more things, including doing economic development.
The reason I bring that up, is, you know, when we were on the council back fifteen, or, I guess, twenty years ago, before the avenue was built, you know, I still remember reading the articles about the council that approved seven hundred thousand dollars in landscaping on Medical Center Parkway, and now, that one-time expense for seven hundred thousand dollars is ten percent of our total sales tax and property tax revenue for the city of Murfreesboro. So, when, there is an investment, but you're recouping that from, from there on out.
Yeah. And one more recommendation I would make, I know time's running short, but, just a real quick review, we operate on two different budgets, we operate on the operating budget and the CIP budget, we've talked about that before, and you've seen that, operating budget comes from taxes and fees, and we expend it on various things, to provide services on a day-to-day basis to citizens, and keep the lights on, and do the various things that we need to do to operate as a city. And we also pay our debt service from that, so, any type of debt that we have, so, when we talked about in the last slide, amount of debt that we need to fund our CIP, what happens in our operating budget is, we have to make those payments out of the operating budget. So, we have the CIP budget, it's generally funded from debt, we get a little bit of help sometimes, out of just cash, but generally, it's funded from debt, and as I said, the debt service pays that. So, to make sure that, or, to give some certainty to using the funds that come in on this transaction over a long period of time, for CIP, additional, well, additional recommendation would be to create a separate account, call it a name, I call it Invest Murphy's Pro, we can call it anything that you'd like, have the sales proceeds go into that account, and use that account to fund our CIP, and then you get back to the model that I showed before, which is very low debt, that's hitting the operating expenses, because you have a dedicated revenue source coming from the transaction itself, that's funding our CIP and our CIP projects. I know, it was pretty quick, but, happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Kels Harris.
I know you said that, you know, the model, that's what it is, it's just a model.
It's just a model, right.
If the sale goes through, and with this money coming in, one thing I'd like to, and I will be pushing this strongly, I would like to see us get these homeless people off the street. We have this kind of money coming in, I'd like to see us build a facility or something, and get the homeless off the street, and, there's too many children around here that are hungry, something toward people, the needs of people, and I understand the roadways, we need all that, and we do need, because I travel the same roads, but, I also pass these homeless people, and I've gotten to know some homeless people, and, if we have this kind of revenue coming in, a portion of this, let's get these homeless off the, off the street.
As I said, that certainly, every year, the council would take up the CIP, and they could be able to review projects, and we could add projects.
Right, but I'm saying, I want that moved up as a priority, if this sale goes through, because we'll have the money, let's not do something else, and let's try to help get these homeless off the street.
Look, all I'll say to that is, based on what we just looked at, I don't want anybody to walk away from this thinking that all of a sudden, we're going to have a windfall of money.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, I know we're not going to have a windfall, but we're going to have some money where we can do something to help, you know, our community is made up of people. I know, and we put a lot of emphasis on buildings, apartments, roads, and I understand that, but we still have to back up, and let's zero in on the people, because they're paying tax, and I know we're not going to have a windfall of money, but, let's do a little reprioritizing.
Well, I say, we won't have a windfall of money that's not already, you know, when we got twenty-nine road projects from nineteen ninety-five, that hadn't even been built yet.
Right.
And we wonder why traffic's bad, there's already money, you know, the, you know, the money, I don't want to say the money's already spent, but, I mean, there's plenty of ways that the money can go around. I think the answer, though, is what you said, which is, we go through the same process we go through every year, which is, during the budget process, we put priorities in, and we do that. I mean, personally, I don't know if we, if we can, we'll have that discussion, as far as going ahead and marking up exactly how every bit of the money's going to be spent for the next fifteen years. You know, if we want to have that discussion, if that's something that's legal, right, appropriate, then I guess we can have that discussion, but, for me, if, assuming that's not a priority, wouldn't we just go through the same process with CIP and budget, and we make our priorities at that time? Is that how it works?
Yeah, that would be the right thing to do. We'd need to do it on an annual basis. Obviously, we want a five-year plan, we want to have forward-looking, we want to see what's coming down, but really, you need to decide it each and every year, probably look at the next year, that would inform on decisions for this particular year, that you're dealing with, and then the five years, a look down the line, but there's a lot that can change over five years, the economy can change quite a bit, you know.
Yeah.
So, there's, and needs could change, so there's a lot of things that could change, so you can't really lock those in past a year or two.
Is it, is it our intention to, for this to be the only discussion we have about this?
No, I mean, I think, I think what, Mr. Tindall, you know, we've all been asked questions about this process, and, you know, the council has really not discussed this, except for, Mr. Tindall, keeping us updated, and there's a timeline, I think, that's going to be put up, but I think the main thing is really to talk about, we've talked about, heard from MED, Middle Tennessee Electric, about what the synergies and what the positives would be, now, we're going to move forward, and we've talked about what the goal would be for the proceeds, you know, I think there's, you don't want the community to think that the proceeds are coming in, and we're going to use this just on things that are not going to benefit the overall community, so I think that's what we've talked about, and how the CIP process works. And then, the next, Craig, why don't you talk about what the next steps are going to be?
All right, so the next step in the timeline is, and we can put that up on the, on the screen, next Wednesday, we're planning on a public information session, where we'd be available to the public between five and seven here in the Rotunda, on the eleventh, for members of the public to come in and gather information, there'll be members from Middle Tennessee staff there, there'll be city staff there, there'll be MED staff there, and so they can answer any kind of questions that the public may have at that point in time. And then, the nineteenth, we'll bring back the transaction, which is, we'll bring it back for decision, for action, on the nineteenth, so, obviously, there can be additional discussion then, before a decision's made.
Because, I've got a lot of comments to make, and I don't want to run us, I know we were running short tonight, and I just want to make sure we.
No, no, we, yeah, we're not voting tonight.
No.
There's no.
I just meant next, I mean, I know we're going to have the public meeting, but on the nineteenth, I want to make sure we had time to talk.
Mr. Browning, I think, where's Mike? Mike, Mr. Lance had this suggestion, I really would like us to push out the link of this, of this meeting tonight, mainly to be able to get the information where, you know, they've heard from Mr. Jones and his team, we've heard from MED, but also, what, what we're talking about with the proceeds, and then, you know, hopefully, when people come out Wednesday night, that could be available as well, to have some bullet points on, here's what the overall process entails, and here's what we're looking at.
Shane, I just want to go on record, and I know that some people are saying, well, what are we going to do with the money? And I think Craig outlined a, what was your term for it, improve Murfreesboro, or?
Invest.
Invest Murfreesboro? I get that, but I would like that invest Murfreesboro to be something more like a Christie-Houston Foundation, where we would operate off the proceeds of the money that we get, rather than a, we're going to spend this, because, the last thing in the world I want us to do is take a valuable asset that this city has, and turn around and go, okay, it's like we own the land and the avenue, and we started selling it off, and it seemed like a good plan for about fifteen years, which this would be a good plan for fifteen years, but the problem is, is you even had in there the comment of no, no property tax increase. Well, the problem is, fifteen years from now, there'll be some council sitting here, that will be in the exact situation that we were six months ago, and, because you're looking at a diminishing return on this property, I think the money should be served and be here for a long time. Now, I'm just responsible for the money for as long as I'm a council member, and all of us have a life expectancy, I guess, as council members. I don't want to handcuff what future council members use the money for, but I think the responsible thing for us to do, is not to be looking at where we can spend this money, but where can we use this money most advantageous to the city, to have something, I would rather us reduce debt, than to try and solve a national problem with homeless population, personally. I just don't think that there's any scenario, that us taking a large amount of this money, and targeting homeless people, is going to do anything other than turn us into either a homeless destination point, or a place where you have an unsustainable operation, because this money is only a fifteen-year fix to the problem. So, I just want to go on record of saying, I think it's very important that, that if this deal does go through, which, you know, I think it's, I think there's synergies in it, and I think there's very positive things that can happen through this process, but I don't want us to take an asset that the city currently has, and not use it most advantageously to the taxpayer, and for us to not have a tax increase for the next fifteen years, if there's anything we learned from this last, most recent budget, is that's not a good idea.
And, I should have clarified, and it was in my notes, but I skipped over it, is that, I'm talking solely about the effect of CIP on there, we're not talking about operating, and, you know, because that still needs to be taken care of through our tax rates and everything else, so, you know, the model that was shown, doesn't assure any tax increase.
The challenge with, sometimes, when you have things in the CIP, though, is they become general fund projects, because, let's say, we build a park, or we build a roadway, those will be continued maintenance required on those things, even after this money's gone, so you've ultimately increased your, your operating expenses, but you don't have the revenue to pay for them anymore, because, I don't want us to look at this as a magic fix, that's going to take care of everything, and we're all going to sing kumbaya for the next fifteen years, because, it's not going to happen that way. We need to manage this money responsibly, and we do not need to look at it as we were rich. We don't need to wake up one day and say, we've got all the money in the world, let's start grabbing all of our pet projects, and let's take care of those things. Let's be financially responsible with the money, and make sure that we can get the longest amount of service out of this money, that we possibly can.
And I want to close on this, because we've got to give the channel, our TV people, time to get set up for the, for the council meeting. You know, I think, we're, it's a blessing to have the opportunity to even be able to sit and talk about this. I think one thing that we've learned over, really, the last year, in talking about the budget that we had to go through over the last two or three months, that was clearly not fun for anyone, that was not fun for staff, but, you know, I think we're at a crossroads within the city, that we have pushed projects and pushed projects, and, you know, we're going to have to make a decision as a council, which direction that we want to see the city go. I mean, I think no one here can disagree, that one of the number-one things that we get hit with on a daily basis, is transportation in the city. And, you know, if we're talking about taking proceeds, I mean, like you're saying, Councilman Smitherman, to look at, you know, building a water park, or something that's a need, not a need, that's a want, we really are going to have to use this to have the discussion as a council, that, you know, what our needs are, and, and want to be able to reassure the public, that that's what our CIP process is through. When you start using your money to, putting in terms of your household, if you come into money and you spend it all on your vacation, then, that's not an asset, you know, that's not something that's going to bring something back, and I think that's what we need to make sure that we're, we're responsible on. So, I want to thank staff for the amount of time that you've put into this. Mike, if you can do everything you can to push out the meeting, so we can get this out to as many people as we can, I think this is a good representation of where we are in this process, and the information that's out there, so.
And I just want to say just one thing, Mayor McFarland, here again, I guess I want to go on record as saying that, this is just me personally, I know that we serve God by serving our fellow man, and I just don't want us to, with all these projects, and I know these things need to be done, but I don't want us to sacrifice, throw away the lives of people, and replace people's knees with asphalt, or anything else, that's all.
All right. We are going to stand adjourned and get ready for our seven o'clock meeting.